Eu gostaria de agradecer a todos por estar aqui hoje e participar deste panel. Neste panel, temos apenas três artigos, não quatro. Por razões logísticas, o primeiro artigo sobre ontologias foi colocado para outro panel ontem. Assim, o primeiro artigo é sobre ontologias e outros dois sobre gramas de forma. Como costumado, a discussão vai acontecer no final dos três artigos. E como vocês sabem, estamos muito tarde, então eu pedi para os oradores tentarem respeitar as horas. O primeiro artigo é apresentado por Rui de Clerc, sendo coautor José Nunes Beirano. E o título é "Bottles from one design: semantics in design generation using ontologies to control shape generation". O artigo dá exemplos de um sistema de design onde algumas gramas de forma simples operam sobre ontologia, descrevendo um domínio de design generativo, todas as possíveis e válidas instâncias permitem nesse domínio. O domínio de design escolhendo um design de bota onde somente a forma da bota é considerada. Rui de Clerc e José Nunes Beirano são ambos do Faculty of Architecture da Universidade de Lisboa e pertencem ao Research Centre of Architecture, Urbanism and Design. Por favor?
Bem, boa manhã a todos, obrigado por estar aqui. Então, vamos falar um pouco sobre semanticas e a relação entre ontologias e sistemas de design usando gramas de forma. O nosso objetivo é criar sistemas de design semanticos multipurpose que podem ser aplicados à arquitetura, urbanismo ou design. E nesse caso, vamos focar no domínio do design. Então, sistemas de design semanticos, como vemos o que é isso, como o concepcionalizamos? Então, é um sistema de design que tem um sistema generativo, em nosso caso, usando gramas de forma compound que são paradas com bases de conhecimento, com ontologias. E com esses dois juntos, podemos introduzir semantica acurência nos designs e avaliação de design durante o processo de design. Gruber reconhece esta simbiose entre gramas de forma e ontologias porque compartilham similaridades entre si. E uma das beijuras de gramas de forma e ontologias é que elas fazem o conhecimento de design explícito. E esta é uma das coisas que é muito atraente e que nos permite mudar para um tipo diferente de sistemas de design. Então, Hudy já nos deu uma introdução muito boa ontem sobre gramas de forma, vou tentar cumprir com isso. Mas basicamente temos regras de forma, como estas duas regras de forma muito simples. Cada regra tem um predicato e a forma consequente. Então, começando com uma forma inicial, como esta, o que fazemos é encontrar o predicato na regra de forma, a transformação equivalente na forma inicial, e então só subtrair dela da forma inicial e substituí-la com a forma consequente, com a transformação equivalente da forma consequente. Então podemos aplicar isso iterativamente ao longo do tempo usando diferentes regras e alcançando diferentes designs que podem aumentar a complexidade muito fácilmente com as regras muito simples. Então, do lado de ontologias, Gruber definiu ontologias, e para mim esta é uma das melhores sinteses de isso, como uma especificação explícita de uma concepcionalização. Estes são três palavras muito importantes: especificação de uma concepcionalização. Em nosso caso, estamos usando o Consortium World Wide Web Standards, que é um linguaggio web ontológico, e tecnologias web semanticas para trabalhar com ontologias. Então, ontologias são muito bem suportadas para tipos bem conhecidos e bem definidos. Em nosso caso, estamos olhando para tipos de design. Elas podem contêineres de diferentes tipos de informação, podem ser físicas, formais, conceptuais, e relacionadas com diferentes ontologias também que definem os mesmos conceitos. E uma das beijuras disso é que a definição de ontologia é um processo colaborativo e adaptativo que muda ao longo do tempo para, espero, uma definição melhor e mais precisa sobre assuntos. Uma das coisas que também é muito interessante é que podemos ter diferentes ontologias para definir os mesmos conceitos, o que nos permite ter diferentes pontos de vista sobre o mesmo assunto. Então, no caso de AL, ontologias consistem de classes, indivíduos e propriedades. Clases são conjuntos que contêm indivíduos em uma estrutura taxonômica com algumas relações de suposição. Indivíduos são objetos no domínio de interesse que pertencem a essas classes. E considerando a suposição do mundo aberto, que qualquer um pode dizer qualquer coisa sobre qualquer tópico, entidades com nomes diferentes podem ser definidas pelos mesmos conceitos. E propriedades são relações binárias entre indivíduos e dados, com algumas propriedades, como propriedade funcional quando só tem uma. Então, a caixa de construção de ontologias são assuntos que se relacionam com objetos através de predicatos. Então, estes triplos que são definidos com URIs, o que nos permite fazer eles únicos para o mundo. Então, como podemos colocar os dois juntos? Então, sobre a regra de forma, se considerarmos o predicato, podemos definir o predicato em uma ontologia. Então, se vermos o exemplo acima, no exemplo anterior tínhamos um triângulo. E podemos dizer que o triângulo consiste de três linhas, L0, L1, L2 e L3, que são linhas da linha concepional, que têm pontos de início e ponto de final, que eu não preciso especificar que existem pontos, porque se definirmos que essas linhas têm um ponto de início e um ponto de final, esses já são considerados pontos. E então, o predicato da regra pode se tornar a mesma parte da ontologia que queremos manter e adicionar nova informação a ela que se relaciona com o antigo conceito, ou não, ou cria um novo conceito. Então, reestruturando com parâmetros também, desculpa. Então, podemos reestruturar ou redefinir uma regra em uma gramática de forma compound, tendo uma parte que é uma representação de forma e uma representação ontológica, que, na verdade, informa a representação de forma e pode guardar completamente a representação da forma em diferentes formatos. Então, em nosso caso, o que estamos construindo para este sistema semantico é trabalhar no lado semantico com frameworks que se baseiam no RDF e AL, que são padrões web semanticos que podem ser editados tanto com Protege como, em nosso caso, estamos usando o AD2, que é uma API Python para programação orientada a ontologia, o que nos permite combinar ontologias com classes Python e misturá-las todas juntas, o que é bastante poderoso. E sobre os sistemas de design, estamos trabalhando com algumas gramas de forma compound que consistem de formas muito simples e básicas e regras genéricas. E os ferramentas que estamos usando agora são Rhinoceros 5 com o Grasshopper 3D e este pequeno componente que nos permite executar código Python dentro de Grasshopper. Que tem alguns erros, mas geralmente funciona bastante bem. E quando combinarmos isso usando programação orientada a ontologia, podemos alcançar sistemas de design semanticos de uma forma bastante interativa. Mas no futuro, o que gostaríamos de fazer é generalizar esta parte e também introduzir SortoGI como parte do mecanismo de sistemas de design que pode aumentar a extensão e o alcance dos nossos sistemas de design semanticos. Então, a provocação: "Todos os botes de um design". Como podemos definir o conceito de uma bota? Tínhamos tantos tipos diferentes de bote, variando de materialidade até o tipo de bebida que eles têm, tamanhos... que é realmente difícil olhar para uma bota e dizer, ok, este é ele, este é o conceito que os define todos. Então precisamos encontrar uma maneira de sintetizar esta informação. Dicionários não são muito úteis porque são muito simples quando se trata de definir bote. Basicamente dizem que é confinado com um espaço maior que tem um espaço mais estreito. Então podemos tentar definir bote através de uma descrição anatómica, tanto o processo de fabricação, materialidade, propósito, etc. E descobrimos que o que parece ser, em nosso caso, o melhor jeito de definir ele seria através de uma descrição anatómica. Então, novamente, então precisamos ver qual é o tipo de descrições que podemos ter para bote. Mas podemos ver e tentar encontrar onde eles poderiam concordar entre si. E podemos ver que a maioria deles tem partitionado a anatomia da bota em mesmas locais usando conceitos similares. E outras abordagens para isso, algumas mais definidas do que outras. Há outras que incluem muitas descrições sem realmente declarar os nomes. Mas podemos ver que quase todos concordam sobre as partes dela. E sobre o design de bote, então temos a representação de forma que precisamos desdobrar em estas partes anatómicas e encaixar uma parte anatómica para uma representação de forma, que é paramétrica. Então, em outubro tínhamos um pequeno workshop onde tentamos colocar designers trabalhando com ontologias e criando ontologias em Protege. E depois da sessão, no final da sessão, decidimos, ok, agora que aprendemos como criar simples ontologias em Protege, vamos tentar definir o conceito de bote. E esta é uma pequena parte do que foi concordado depois da sessão. Então, considerando a anatomia de uma bota, que todas as bote teriam uma base de bota, um corpo de bota que, nesse caso, também teria um label que decidimos colocar de lado em vez de ser explicitamente uma parte da base da bota, porque o label pode estar em outro lugar também. Bota, costelas, cintura de bota e finisca. E então, considerando, por exemplo, o vinho, beber e também outros bebidas, a base da bota teria diferentes formas sobre sua função, tanto as costelas quanto o corpo. Agora, para ter uma representação de bote, se quisermos ir o jeito ontológico, também precisamos de uma ontologia para descrever geometrias para que possamos relacioná-las de uma forma consistente e adaptiva. Há algumas ontologias que foram criadas ao longo do tempo sobre geometria. Decidimos redesenhos uma delas usando sintaxe Rhino Common, para que então apenas exportemos as representações em Rhino Common para Rhino e terem gerado a forma. Então, como podemos parar os conceitos com representações paramétricas de forma? Então, se tivermos uma parte de bota, apenas dizemos que ela tem uma representação que é uma representação geometrica. A parte de baixo pertence à ontologia da bota e a representação à ontologia da geometria. Então, no caso de desenhar uma bota de vinho, podemos começar dizendo que ela vai ser um vinho redondo envelhecido que vai causar sedimentos. E se tem sedimentos, então deveria ter uma ponta de bota onde podem descansar ao longo do tempo. Então, começamos com a ponta de bota com uma representação paramétrica que podemos ver lá. Então, iríamos para a bota de bota, o corpo que se relaciona com a ponta de bota. Então, a costela que precisa ser accentuada porque o vinho causa sedimentos ao longo do tempo. A cintura e a finisca. Todos esses juntos nos dão uma seção da bota de vinho, que pode então ser traduzida em uma representação de forma 3D. E isso para diferentes tipos de bote com diferentes propriedades. Então, trabalho futuro. Uma das coisas que precisamos fazer é consolidar esse sistema de design, porque agora é quase como um Frankenstein que está sendo colocado e precisa ser consolidado e ajustado com a interface adequada. Combina padrões de design melhor com semanticas. Por exemplo, este exemplo que dei do vinho redondo envelhecido que causa sedimentos. Se causa sedimentos, então precisa de uma ponta, não pode ter apenas uma pressão na base ou a forma da bota não pode ser muito fluída. Precisa conter o vinho o máximo possível quando deslocarmos a bota, senão os sedimentos vão misturar com o vinho novamente. E isso pode ser imbedecido no processo de design, não apenas algo que precisamos lembrar: oh, talvez eu não deveria desenhar a bota desta forma, porque há algumas propriedades que a bota precisa cumprir. Extende as representações de bota para novos tipos, o que é bastante desafiador especificamente quando se trata de espíritos, porque a tendência em bote de espírito é estar completamente fora da norma, a maioria deles. Mas ainda mantêm os mesmos conceitos que descobrimos na anatomia da bota. Então podem ser mapados e representados em um sistema de design semantico. Extende e enriqueça ambas as ontologias, a ontologia da bota e a ontologia da geometria, e aplica a metodologia a outros domínios de design. Este trabalho vem de quando começamos, o trabalho anterior. Targetamos o domínio de urbanismo com um sistema de design para cruzas de ruas que tem os mesmos conceitos sob a linha. E agora isso nos trouxe ao design, o que tem uma maneira mais fácil de lidar com conceitos do que a ontologia urbana. Então, muito obrigado pela atenção.
O segundo artigo é apresentado por Pedro Angel e tem o título "Supergrid: A gramática para um kit de peças de educação". Sobre o tema deste artigo, o supergrid é o produto de um projeto de pesquisa a seguir vinculado a um primeiro ano de estúdio de design na Universidade Federal de Rio de Janeiro, que empreguei exercício de kits de peças de forma, um método dedutivo que compartilha alguns princípios-chave com o ramo de gramas generativas, sendo que são raramente universos ilimitados de elementos e um conjunto de regras de combinação. Os objetivos deste artigo são completar. De um lado, ele se concentra no processo de desenvolvimento do supergrid até agora. Do outro lado, intende incluir tópicos específicos para o desenvolvimento de algoritmos que esperam estabelecer direção em termos de recursos e tecnologia computacional para serem desenvolvidos nas pesquisas nas próximas fases. Pedro Angel vem do Faculty of Architecture da Universidade Federal de Rio de Janeiro e pertence ao laboratório de modelos e ensino teórico e metodologia do projeto urbano. Ele é professor na Universidade Federal de Rio de Janeiro, dedicado a estúdios de primeira série no departamento de Análise de Representação de Forma. Por favor, Pedro?
Bem, boa manhã. O supergrid é o design de um algoritmo que visa a produzir modelos físicos e digitais para ajudar um estúdio de design especificamente formando um catálogo de situações arquitectônicas que podem ser demonstradas aos alunos para entender compõe e problemas arquitetônicos fundamentais. O estúdio de design usa o Kit de Peças de Formação, sua estratégia didática bem conhecida e notariamente celebrada por sua utilização em estúdios de design de primeira série. É basicamente baseado em um conjunto limitado de elementos e algumas regras de combinação que poderiam ser mais ou menos estritas. E a vantagem, a vantagem deste tipo de exercício de design é permitir a aluno de primeira série, um que não é muito familiar com o processo de design, entrar no processo de experimentação e através disso entender tanto raciocínio sintético e conhecer os elementos de arquitetura de um certo linguagem, podemos dizer. Mas também ganhar critérios e entender problemas fundamentais de arquitetura. Estes são todos exercícios dos anos 1950s da Universidade Texas de Austin, desenvolvido por John Hayduk. E este é um desenvolvimento mais avançado deste tipo de exercício na União Cooperativa nos anos 70. Nós, na Universidade Federal de Rio, adoptamos este tipo de estratégia didática para fazer algumas perguntas fundamentais sobre o espaço arquitetônico para alunos de primeira série. A agenda do nosso estúdio tem algumas guias. Uma delas é entender o múltiplo sentido semantico de formas e situações arquitetônicas. Então, um pilar ou uma parede aqui não é apenas um plano que sustenta a construção ou limita o espaço. É também um elemento visual, também um elemento de carga, em termos do pilar, e interfere no uso e assim por diante. Outra parte da agenda é permitir aos alunos utilizar raciocínio sintético como uma forma de computação sem computadores, entendendo sistemas modulares e variações de dimensões, e aplicando esse raciocínio a problemas de design muito simples. Hoje em dia, estamos trabalhando com lotes limitados, estranhos, com problemas de subtracções para trazer luz para o interior e a interface entre o espaço interno e a rua como um local de problemas arquitetônicos fundamentais. Portanto, o faço tem sido um lugar onde discutimos o problema da interface espacial e suas consequências em termos de uso e construção da rua. Estes exercícios no estúdio são usados para ganhar um linguagem, para aprender arte também e para fazer perguntas fundamentais. E segue para perguntas arquitetônicas mais complexas, um problema arquitetônico mais complexo que desenvolve-se em um site real. E este é o exercício de encerramento do ano. Bem, uma das questões postas quando usamos exercício de kits de peças de forma é que temos que ter um linguagem arquitetônica limitada. Nós, por razões didáticas, focamos na arquitetura racional do início do século XX, 20, mas também com o contraparte brasileiro que adapta-se ao clima e usa o faço como uma zona mais ampla de buffer entre o interior e o exterior, com todos os elementos de esmalte e também alcança a arquitetura vernacular. Isso, por suposto, tem uma relação com a escena brasileira ao redor da periferia brasileira. E nós percebemos que os elementos básicos da arquitetura moderna, em suas versões mais erdites, também se espalham na arquitetura ou construção sem arquiteto que é pervasiveo nas periferias urbanas de Brasil. Since a maioria dos nossos alunos também vem de esses lugares, também entendemos que esta é uma forma de fazer a inteligência de design ser promovida sobre recursos que não necessariamente estão disponíveis nas principais áreas do país. Então, temos permitido a utilização muito simples do linguaggio de kits de peças de forma, mas também desviações de suas primeiras instâncias. Bem, dentro do estúdio, há sido claro há anos que ter uma coleção adequada de formas arquitetônicas que usamos dentro do kit de peças de forma e dentro do universo de referências. Nós percebemos que ter este tipo de coleção de exemplos tem sido uma ajuda didática muito frutífera. Então, após algum tempo, começamos a coletar as melhores obras de alunos anteriores para mostrar exemplos de variações sintéticas e relações específicas entre encerramento e estrutura, o que o kit de peças de forma permite. Portanto, a ideia do supergrid veio a nós quando olhávamos para esta grande coleção de modelos. Nós percebemos que talvez um sistema de computação nos permitir produzir uma grande quantidade de modelos ou uma grande modela contendo, apenas como um catálogo, um grande número de variações possíveis dentro do kit de peças de forma usado no estúdio. Então, há quase quatro meses que começamos a desenvolver este algoritmo Grasshopper em que produzimos o modelo digital onde, controlando um conjunto de variáveis, podemos jogar com diferentes partes da arquitetura e simultaneamente criando os desenhos de linha para o modelo físico. Então, o objetivo aqui é produzir uma grande quantidade deste tipo de catálogo de situações. Por suposto, a ideia do kit de peças de forma sendo entendido como uma gramática é o que levou à construção do algoritmo. Mas para formalizá-lo computacionalmente, precisamos primeiro conceber o que seria o... we needed first to devise what would be the actual parts of the, of our, of our system. So we implemented what we call a loose analytical grammar, parting from the actual exercises done in different semesters. Of course, they variate along, along the years. But also adopting a simple language for structure, which is composed of pillars, beams, and slabs. There is no flat or beamless slab. This mainly because civil construction in Brazil still uses mostly beams. We implement, we also found some basic lines onto the closure of faceted modern buildings. So waistline, the top of windows, and then the limits of the closings being the beams on bottom and top. And went on into analyzing a few modern examples to gain the language or the elements for the facade closures and also the relationship between closing elements and structure. So from there, we devised a series of categories for the elements. The first big category being the structure, composed of pillars, beams, and slabs. Then the closing systems, composed of walls, opaque walls, transparent and translucent glass. Perforated walls, which in Brazil is a system known as cobogó, basically a perforated brick, which allows for wind to pass through. The parapets as limits for balconies. And of course, the absence of any closing system as a possible solution, either for pilotes or terraces. And then a third kind of category, which are the external protections for, usually for sun. So all kinds of panels, moving panels, shading planes, like a small horizontal or vertical slabs perpendicular to the facades, and filters, which we can mention the brissolé, which is present in our Brazilian architectural language, and possibly different kinds of filters like. And of course, there's a space open for more elements, either regarding to relationship to the ground, which can be added further onto the, to the, to the supergrid. Well, the, the elements of structure, I'll detail this, this part a little more so we can understand the possible variations contained in the grid, made of pillars, beams, and slabs. But then the idea is to allow for little movement onto the facade. So we started with six types of relationships between beams and pillars and slabs, which allows for this sort of variation. This means that the system doesn't allow for all kinds of stretching and variations, but usually only the segments of structure, of the structure are subject to choice and variation. So they're being a little recessed, a little influence. And then, of course, also the thickness of the pillar perpendicular to the facade. This was basically the language that we started to use and allows for plays that may form this kind of complexity in terms of form. Of course, in terms of the, the closing planes as well, we have eighty, twenty-eight designs based on this small grid, which can be chosen by the designer. And then the openings, where the black part is, can be filled by either glass or cobogós or be let open. There is, of course, also a set of possibilities in terms of closing planes and so on. I will not go into this part. Well, this block was devised as a unit for the model. On the front part, it has all the closings. And on the back part, we let the structure be still naked. If you look closely, of course, you see larger pillars on higher pavements. It's not still well devised. We have to get this structure logic straight still. This is the idea of setting up the catalog so we can understand the structure in terms of its skeleton. And then on the other side, to understand what role the closing system, the closing planes play in the construction of the facade. Well, one great issue was to design the physical model because of, of course, being a physical model poses some technical questions. So we realized we needed to, to, we were limited by our resources. One key issue here was to use the MDF of three millimeters, which is fifteen centimeters in one to fifty scale. And of course, using as less glue as possible, privileging snappy and fitting for a fast assembly of the model. So we devised an actual set of elements for the physical model, which allows for this faster assembly. So from a beam, ground being put on that position, we have, we snapped the ribs, which are elements that contain both pillars and perpendicular beams. Beams that are perpendicular to the facade and complete with inner beams. And then the facade beams, which are segmented according to the variations proposed by the algorithm. They're put later. Then the slabs, which are enclosed by the facade beams. We cannot see the slabs from the facade. And then the closing planes as walls are added. And then so on with the glasses and, and, well. The, one of the issues to design within the supergrid was the problem of connecting the, the elements of the structure. So we, we started to use slots and protrusions to allow for a fitting. And this organized into this fifteen by fifteen centimeters grid allowed for the MDF be used on both the three possible directions in terms of the Cartesian grid that organizes the structure. So here we have an example of the fitting system devised in the physical model. Yeah, with the slabs outside, being enclosed by the facade beams. In terms of the whole structure, this grid, structural grid is partially parametric. We can move on distances and also adjust the size of the basic module. And the variations are being controlled in Grasshopper through this, what I call a kind of a control room. This is one of the issues that needs to have improvement. The interface is still very, still complicated. Oh, and we had to develop kind of simple conditional coding to allow for the slots and the protrusions in different elements to, to meet the conditions found in each node of the structure. So for example, if we find that on this particular node, there's a recessed beam on one side and a balcony on the other, this is going to produce a combination of designs for the joints, which is specific. So we ended up with different, twenty-eight different designs for the ribs and nineteen different designs for the meeting of the beams, where the facade beams meet the ribs. This was done by simple Python code. And this is the conditional coding that we found, we developed. One, one, as I mentioned, the selection is still to have, oh, okay. It's so to be, to be well-developed in terms of the interface. And one of the big issues that has appeared to us as the further development of the algorithm is to design well the selection system to be used in the, in the construction of the, of the supergrid. Okay, I'll leave this, okay? Thank you.
The third paper of this panel is presented by Daniel Lentz and is titled "Generative System Using Shape Grammar Can Study Visual Programming", about the theme of this paper aims to describe techniques and the results of a workshop for finding and generative systems, which took place at the Federal University of Rio de Janeiro related to generative systems and their translation and application of the, to the architectural project. Daniel Lentz comes from the Federal University of Rio de Janeiro. He is an architect and urbanist by Federal University of Seara and PhD candidate at Graduate Program in Urbanism of the Federal University of Rio de Janeiro. Please.
Thank you very much. Hopefully, I will not be very long. And let's see how we can do and get this well explained. Like I was, it was said yesterday by Gonçalo, we had a workshop in, in RJ last year. And it was a study about generative systems and trying to see some techniques, how far they can go and how could we implement them using Grasshopper. And it was divided in four categories. We studied shape grammar, health systems, automatic cellular, and genetic algorithm. And it, I ended up with shape grammars, mostly because of my work during the masters with Gabriel Silvani and things like that. Anyway, so the first problem that we have here is how to define exactly what is a generative system. And it's not exactly very definitive. The boundaries are much loose. And we, sometimes we think that one, one kind of method can be a generative system, the other is not. And this was much of our concernings. And, but still, one thing is very clear. You have to establish which are the steps to use during a certain procedure. And how does they go and how to implement this is further consideration. So the problem again is, if I say to someone, to a computer that doesn't have much knowledge, just, just work with very simple commands, "Go and draw this", he will not know how to do it and have to explain it very, very, very well and get every steps very briefly, depending on the capacity of it. It may be a computer, a personal computer, for instance, or it may be as well be a student. If you go to tell him to draw facade, you have to tell him first how to do it, have to explain it very clearly. Sometimes when this computer gets more experience, you can just say, "Draw a house" and it works very well. It's no problem at all. Well, so for the workshop, we decided, we wanted to build our own implementation, computational implementation of the shape grammar. And then we went back to study a little more of the first definitions by Stein and Gibbs. And we could track its, its origins to Chomsky's generative grammars, which works pretty much like. There comes an idea to a person and then it's inherent to each of us, a structure of how it will become a sentence. And then we start to search for some words to fill the slots of this structure and replace that originally blank one by something that has a meaning. And what we understand that was translated to shape grammars was this idea of replacement of some slots or something like that. So, and reading further, we started to see that all the time we talk about vocabulary, some shapes that we use. We talk about always, about the rules. And it kind, kind of gets automatic or not talked about, that there'll be some sequence of how the rules we applied to each shapes, but it's not exactly very explicit. And this is one of the things that we understood should be more well-addressed, to explicit each step that we are doing. So the grammar, we started to organize it in this tri-coordinate. Have a set for the shapes, have a set for the rules. And then a set for, that will describe the sequence of applying the rules. So the grammar will be the relating of all these sets. And then we have to figure a way to computationally concatenate those. So it gets easier because I just have to work with just these three sets. And if I assemble a mechanism that can take this, the first element here, the second element here, and the other one that says who works with whom, then it's all done, it's easier to work. So I'll have to sit here for a while. What we devised then for the, for the definition in Grasshopper was, we have some, some initial words here that we're going to use as the vocabulary. We also have a list that says the order of rules that we're going to apply. This, this order of rules is very important because how can this thing, this, how can it be worked? How can you synchronize the rules with the shapes? This is the main thing that makes the mechanism, the whole mechanism work. And then we have a section that is where are the whole rules. The students that we had during the workshop were not exactly all the same level of expertise. Not many of them would know very well how to code in Grasshopper. So it needed to make So we needed to make it as simple as possible, mostly transparent. Just show them, hey, this is how it works. We click here, you click there, and then play and it work, it will run. So we developed this box that could, that was the responsible for applying the rules. So we take the first shape, the second shape, and this is the shape that came from the natural flow of the program. And then it will give you back the shape transformed or replaced or things like that. And this is inside that code. We made it so that it takes the geometry and the first geometry and the second geometry compares one of the other, all the relations, the scaling, of rotation and things like that. And then comes the real inputs from the flow of the program, and it applies the same transformation and gives it back. This is important because then we could use, as well as some drawing made in the real interface, or you can do, use it by making definition in GRASSHOPPER. It would be okay to use either and then be free for how, how much knowledge the students have from that, from GRASSHOPPER. So the teams, I got two, two teams to work with GRASSHOPPER. And it was always a team of three. And some of the times, we always had someone that was a teacher or a graduate student and were very acquainted with GRASSHOPPER, and some other two that were beginners. So they could help one with the other and have sure, and make sure that some work would come up and not spend much of our time doing the coding for the teams. So the first team decided to explore it in a more free manner, the shape grammar, and they decided to get some music as an input. And that would change how a facade would look like of this building. And it was very interesting because it was a replacement rule, but was it a shape or not a shape? And this was one of very interesting questions. So the next team, they were a little bit more pragmatic. They wanted to have some form more specific, a shelter. And they started to do some experimentations on how, which set of rules and what sequence we could get to a shape that would make some sense, as I say. And it was very nice to see the different approaches and the different questions that they brought up. And this is the part that I think that is more interesting about what we had there. The, the objective of the workshop was to see how would that work and which are the limits and probably raise more questions and, who knows, some answers at a point about the nature of what we're working with. So anyway, before I get to those questions, it was interesting to say that the code did work very well. The teams used it for a while and then decided, no, I will do my own implementation of this structure. And they started to see, to, to try to develop how to make this transformation and how to make this concatenation of the sequence of rules. But even, even though it was very easy to use, there were some problems. We didn't get to have the code recognizing the shapes. And it couldn't also, of course, then recognize an emergent shape. It wasn't exactly a very problematic question because it was, it were very simple exercises that we made. And anyway, but then we, we, we saw, okay, for further future work, maybe we could go and solve this problem and the other one. And the thing is, the part of emergence recognition of the shape, they would be, they could be emulated inside the rules, not exactly as having a mechanism to search for a new, new shape. But we are coordinating it, so we know what kind of shape will appear after that procedure. So we can already, already tell, okay, after this proceeding, they're going to have, happen a new shape. And that's okay. It's a little bit fake, but it works better than it's working right now. And the, and it could, if we move this part to the selection of the rules, instead of having a sequence of rules that I say, or like apply, apply the rule one, then the rule one again, then the rule three, then the rule four, I can have a mechanism that is based on which, which is the shape that is resultant formed from the earlier stage. So this first transformation built a triangle. Then which are the rules that can use triangles? And then goes to that next rule and will produce a circle. And which is the rule that works with a circle, and then you go to that. So the sequence of the grammar could be done organized by this kind of, by the sequence of shapes produced. Anyway, and the most interesting, then, when we got the ideas that we, we got after that is this derivation mechanism of the grammars, they are much of the time very left to the side, never talked about. To say, here are the rules, here are the shapes, and then they just draw on the bottom the sequence that is applied. But that never, never explains how this mechanism works. But it's especially fundamental for the working of the grammar. Depending off the sequence that you build, the result won't make any sense. So how can we be sure that it will work fine? And which are the criteria that you use to select from one rule to the other and be sure that the end will be something meaningful? This is the first thing. Of course, there is the other problem that is about the randomness that is always very addressed when we talk about programming shapes. I just use a random sequence of rules and then to build an object that is important to me? We, what are the moments that I can use this randomness? Of course, if I just start playing around with the shapes, the final result will be a complete mess that won't make any sense at all. So I have to have some order for it, which doesn't exactly expel randomness from our process. And I understand that what we could do is, I can go with this precise sequence up to this point. And here I can make a decision and have three or four or 10 or 100 options that go to another direction and then to this other node that I can have another directions. And then the randomness would be to choose from different paths of those trees. It's, it gets then to, and later questions, I lost a little bit of the order then, but I will get that to this. The other question that is interesting is, which are the limits of the shapes that we work with shape grammars? It's just lines, just simple shapes. But when they look like a De Paladini grammar, they, they comes from simple parallel lines and then they switch it to a very much complex shape that represents a whole section of a wall. So what are the, what are the limits of this? And it comes from the first group that was talking about music. Because if I come from two parallel lines and switch it to a representation, a section of a wall, almost a symbolic representation again, why can I come from a letter that's C that represents a note, a musical note, and exchange it, replace it directly for a full design of a facade or for a full design of a house? Which are the limits of those transformations that are allowed? And if so, can I just replace the shapes for symbols and then work it for like a symbolic grammars, for instance? And this is a question I think is very interesting to, to debate. And going back to the idea of making a decision tree, and this is the problem that was posed by the second group is, it's very troublesome to do a design using shape grammar that really gets make sense. If I just do the traditional way, won't it be faster and maybe with a better quality? And it gets, it got us thinking a lot. And the idea that maybe I think that can consolidate better is like this. If I just do a once-in-a-time project, I would do just this house or just this glass or just this bottle. If I just draw it, maybe it's quicker than if I do it with a shape grammar. But when I finish my project as a shape grammar, the multitude of elements, of instances that I can build with those, with that system that I built, the next time that I do a bottle or a house, instead of having, of taking six months to make this project, I'll take six seconds. And maybe, because the code is already done, it just have to run and play the dice for the randomness and then have a different example of the same object for me. And then maybe it's a place where we could use better the idea for a generative system to cut the time of doing a project. Not the first one, but when we start to doing many with the same system. And that's it. Thank you.
There are some questions?
It's about the link between ontologies and shape grammars. And I mean, I don't want to, you know, I, I don't want to be critical about it. I think it's, you know, it's really important and it's very good. But in your examples where you're, you're showing the ontologies mostly in relationship to the geometry. And it seems to me that, you know, replacing the geometrical description with an ontological description of this, you know, the same information isn't really, you know, moving very much ahead. I mean, this is the things we can already do. So I was wondering where in your examples does the, the value of the ontology really comes true? Where is, you know, can you, where is it that the ontologies allow you to do more than what could be done with, you know, a geometrical shape grammar?
In a way, it, it looks like the ontology is basically replacing or, or complementing what would be a description. Like it, it could be, it could be seen like that. The way I see it, but again, this requires further testing and, and demonstration, is that the ontologies can go beyond descriptions and beyond representations in the sense that they, they convey meaning and semantics. So instead of just having a description tag associated to a shape, it can be related to other parts in the design system. So I'm not just saying, looking at one piece of the design system that is apparently unrelated to the things, like it's, it's a tag. Now, that, that tag means something and relates to other parts of the design. So when I operate upon it, I'm affecting the remaining of the design, or it should be reciprocal. Another thing is that, and again, I have not reached this step yet. This is basically speculative until now, is that in theory, we can use the inference mechanisms of, of ontologies to identify relations that were not specifically set there. So I put a new part in design that wasn't there previously, and I only give a few relationships. But then the ontology, through reasoning, can say, okay, that point belongs, it's actually between these two of the endpoints of the line, therefore, and it's in the mid-distance, so it's a middle point of that line. And if, if we set these relationships, oh, new triangles emerge. So in a sense, with the, in theory, with enough descriptions or with enough support in the ontology, it should be able to infer new geometries and new relationships there and maybe even new meanings. So this could be a step forward in a, in a, in a shape grammar implementation. Right now, it's, it's not the easiest thing to do in the sense it's, it's still hardcoded, so it's not very friendly. But hopefully, it will, it will get towards that and into a friendly way that a designer can do the easiest part, which is basically create a shape and are related to others. And then the backstage mechanism does the rest, says, well, maybe this then creates new shapes, or maybe this means something else.
Can I add something to that?
Yeah, it's, it's basically two points. First point is, the idea of doing this work with the bottles actually came out of trying to simplify the, the problem we were tackling before, which was the generation of a, a, a street cross-section, which embedded a lot more, more complex stuff about the, the, the city structure and, and aspects of composition of public space. So to, to, to start with that, with that problem would be a very complex approach. And we, we had already a, a, a student that developed a parametric model for bottles that was actually designing bottles from a wine bottle to the Coca-Cola bottle. But it had no semantics. It was a simple parametric code. So because we had this idea that with simple geometric rules, we could actually generate many, many bottles. The idea was, let's try to connect this with ontologies and make them semantically valid somehow because it's a simple system to tackle. And a good example would be, let's say you model a geometry of, of a wine bottle. And because you have explicit, explicit relationships saying that certain types of geometry actually produce a specific type of wine bottle, or for a specific type of wine even, you could say that getting a certain kind of geometry, well, this is a wine bottle and it's for this type of wine because the ontology infers that information from the geometry. And it is possible in principle to codify that in this way. So it, it's more intelligent than it seems because it's not just giving the geometry, it's giving information about the type of wine that the bottle is supposed to contain. And so it, it's, it's more than, it's actually visually accessible. Then, of course, the idea would be to go back to the street cross-section, which has a lot more issues related with it, the quality of the public space and how to measure the quality of the public space and so on. But actually, the idea is to, later on, get back to the, to the street cross-section and applying the same ideas.
This time for, for Daniel. Well, actually, I first wanted to make a comment. I mean, I liked your I mean, I liked your reflections at the end, but I think that some of those questions actually already have some answers. And for example, when you're talking about, you know, the symbolic, you know, the, well, the shape versus the symbolic representation, I mean, if you're looking into, if you look into description grammars or, you know, even simplify it, consider, you know, labeled elements, labeled points, those could be considered as symbolic for, you know, representing something. And this can be easily integrated into a shape grammar. But my question is really about your parametric implementation. And what I didn't understand was why you had this list of rules, I mean, references to rules that you then, you know, that specified in which order the rules would be applied? Because it seemed to me that in a Grasshopper model, wouldn't you just have a series of nodes, each representing a rule application, that you just link the output from one rule application becomes the input of another rule application? Didn't, wouldn't that seem more logical? I mean, maybe you had a specific reason for doing that, I'd like to hear about that.
Yeah, the first part of the question, yeah, I believe that when you start using some markers and colors and lines and spots like that, you begin to work with the symbolic. But it was, it was a strange and hard debate there. Okay, this is allowed, this is not allowed off the rules. If we lose in the rules, okay, then no problem to work the semantic. But then, okay, I can play a chord in a guitar and translate it in a shape, no problem. I'm okay with that, it's just a question of a strict definition. So, but no problem with that. The other, the other thing about having a list is, then every time that I do a different rule, a different sequence, I'll have to rebuild the whole code. In that, that form, no, it is not, I don't have that. I, in one set, I put the shapes, in the other set, I code the rules or use those blocks and repeat them. And then I have a selector that uses that first list, that is the sequence, that says to use this rule and this one, not this one, this one again, and that's the selector. So I don't have to rebuild the whole definition. And if I add a new rule, I just copy that block, draw the new, the new objects, and it's already done. And I can change that sequence freely without having to rebuild my whole code.
Shape grammars and any grammar in a language can create very silly things. Chomsky said that about any, any language. Portuguese, I may pronounce a sentence in Portuguese that's absolutely silly thing, and it's semantics that take care of the sentence is not a silly thing. And I think it's ontology that can bring that semantic, static semantics that allows that the syntax does not create many objects that has no meaning at all. And I stressed many times here that not only the, well, the internal semantics or connotation of semantics, but also the, the meaning, or that is to say, the external semantics, what the language relates with the reality. The notational semantics is also very important here, the translation between the internal language and what is outside the language is very important here. And I think this answers your first question also, is what is introduced by ontology? Ontology creates or describes the semantics that in the, in our studies, there is nothing to say, to see with the shape and that can orient, can drive the research of the possible sentence to what it's meaningful.